We ready? Call the Planning Commission to order. Uh, we'll do the invocation and the pledge. Ashley will lead the invocation. Steve will lead the pledge. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here safely tonight. We pray that your will be done through our discussions and decisions here tonight. We ask for your guidance and hand on us and our community through this meeting and into the new year. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Establishment of quorum. We have four six of eight, so we do have a quorum.
Almo the line.
Okay. Alice, you there too? Alice?
Ms. Gormes, are you able to unmute your phone so we can tell that you've joined?
Well, should we change it to five of six of present, five of eight?
I, I would.
Okay, we have five of eight. We do have a quorum. Adoption of agenda?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could, before you adopt this agenda, we do need to make one slight change. At the end of this agenda, instead of adjournment tonight, we will recess to reconvene the Planning Commission to January 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And that will be for the public hearing that you made the motion to set last week at our work session on December 21st.
Thank you. Approval of minutes.
But approve the agenda.
So we want to vote on the agenda?
I move to vote. Approve the agenda as with changes.
Second.
First and seconded, let's vote. All in favor? Dabney, how do you vote? Dabney, how do you vote?
The same.
Approving the agenda, how do you vote?
Dabney, they've made the motion to adopt the agenda. Could we get your vote? I mean, we have to have somebody joining. We've counted him for quorum. Mr. Cruz, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line, but I can't hear very well.
Okay, the last order of business was that there was a motion made to adopt the agenda and a second. Could we get your vote for that motion?
I can't rightfully vote because I can't hear what's going on well enough to know.
Oh, Mr. Right. Mr. Right? If we could utilize your legal counsel for a moment?
Again, see if you can get her to answer.
Esther, to unmute.
Ms. Gormes? If you're still on, could you unmute your phone and, and join us for a vote?
Because Alice hasn't answered, so we didn't.
There's only four of us here. Want me to try her on the phone?
That he couldn't hear good enough to make a vote.
Alice, it's Pat. We're at the Planning Commission. We need your vote. Supposedly you're on Zoom, but we can't raise you. I don't know what to tell you. Call in maybe? Or call me back maybe? I don't know. Bye. I just called her. But she didn't answer the phone. I had to leave a text message or a voicemail.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got more than half.
It's four, four is not a quorum, is it?
Got to have more than half.
Huh?
Got to have more than half.
Wonder how far out Johnny is?
Huh?
Wonder how far out Johnny is? Try to make it.
I don't know. We don't need a motion for that, do we? We'll go take a 10-minute recess. Let me try Johnny. Oh, sorry.
We're close, sir. Now you're good.
Planning Commission is back in session. We were looking for a vote from you, Dabney, on the adoption of the agenda.
I can hear some, but you need to slow down and talk distinctly.
Okay. We're looking for your vote on the adoption of the agenda.
I vote yes.
Good. Now, Alice?
Yes.
Good. Unanimous. Approval of minutes, November 16th.
Don't move.
Can we vote? All in favor? Dabney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Alice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good. Very good. Unanimous. Approval of minutes for November twenty-third.
Don't move.
Second.
Can we vote? Dabney, how do you vote?
I sustain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Alice, how do you vote? Alice?
Yes.
Thank you. Five of six. Approved. Public comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two in the form of email and how many did we? And two in the form of voicemail. I'll go ahead and start with the email comments. Our first one comes to us from Mindy Zlatnik at one thirty-two The Way, Buckingham two three nine two one, Glenmore District. She states, "On twelve twenty-one, the Planning Commission put forward a definition of commercial prospecting that is far too broad. My concern began when I learned of core drilling for gold, and the definition of registered commercial prospecting now includes excavating, as in, 'the exploration of material included but not limited to minerals, stone, gas, or rock by commercial purposes by drilling, excavation, or other land disturbance activities for commercial purposes by the entity,' end quote. We understand that there are various types of mining. What we're asking for in it is action specific to gold mining. Allowing core drilling for gold and other polymetallic mining, and in particular excavation, opens the door to the possibility of open pit gold mining, the use of cyanide and requisite leaching and ecological devastation that can't be mitigated, and we do not want that to happen in our neighborhood. Would you? What is the boundary between excavation and mining? Consider amending your recommendation to the board tonight. You made this decision without hearing from the public and without outside views of consequence. Your recommendation to the board paves the road for gold mining to occur. By separating the issue of core drilling of gold from the actual possibility of mining for gold, you are not in a position to look at the consequences of your recommendation, or are you? Do you actually want gold mining to happen in Buckingham County? Sure sounds like you do. According to the Constitution of Virginia and Article eleven, Section one, it is the Commonwealth's policy to protect its atmosphere, lands, and waters from pollution, impairment, or destruction for the benefit, enjoyment, and general welfare of the people of the Commonwealth. It is the charge of the Board of Supervisors to uphold the Constitution of Virginia by protecting and maintaining our health and safety. I ask that you make a recommendation that would support the board to do their job. We have the right to clean air, water, and soil according to this article. It is clear from their testimony that the timber corporations that are allowing the core drilling of gold feel that they have the right to do what they like on their property. Though this may be true, what is also true is that they do not have the right to compromise our health with their actions. These companies have been given the right to grow trees as an agricultural product, but gold does not grow on trees, and this kind of mining has no place in A-one land. I ask the county to follow its comprehensive plan and keep Buckingham County rural. Our rights to clean air, water, and soil must take precedence over corporate rights. Thank you for your attention and consideration of this point of view." Next comment comes from Heidi Devia Berto. "I live in the James River District. I am deeply disappointed at your proposal to move forward with allowing commercial prospecting by drilling, excavation, or other land disturbance activities by a simple registration. No other oversight was talked about. This is less oversight than required for permits for water wells or drain fields which landowners must comply with. Danny Allen added the words, 'excavation or other land disturbance activities to drilling,' which expands the activity and the interpretation of that activity extensively, under the guise of it all being not impactful to our community. Could excavation be interpreted to mean essentially mining? You have yet to address the toxicity of modern-day large-scale mining of gold and polymetallic minerals, nor cyanide bleaching. It appears that none of you have done your homework, which we, the citizens, have asked you to do. You have ignored our input and seriousness of this activity in our home. I see the way you welcome the industry and academic experts while ignoring, disdaining, and being quite rude to us, your constituents. These experts are by no means neutral. They are very clearly pro-mining. Your advisors are not presenting a balanced or fair picture of what is easily available to anyone who is interested. Kendall Fountain appears to be presenting a thinly veiled threat to the county that Wirehouser will have its way. You have been elected by the people, and it is your constitutional duty and right to protect us, our water, air, and land. You have the power to protect us if you choose to see it that way. It takes courage to face down corporate power. It appears that you would rather cozy up to industry with their false promises of local jobs and revenue. We are by no means anti-business, so do not use that argument to discredit us. We are very discerning. We are not interested in the county being plundered by more false promises. We already have a superfund site. We hear about the very hushed cancer ally around the Kynite Mine, and how even three filters on a nearby well doesn't make the water fit to drink, the particulate matter and noise disturbances of the Slate Mine. Times are changing. We want a better world. Let's follow the comprehensive plan. When we envision a better world together, we will get there sooner. Thank you."
Hi, this comment is for the meeting tonight, the twenty-eighth, of the Planning Commission. I'm Kendah Haneman from District five. I ask who has faith that the hearing that's being planned on January eleventh regarding commercial prospecting is not about the prospect of gold mining in Buckingham County? The experts invited to speak on the panel at the joint work session last Monday might help answer this question. There were two speakers from Aston Bay Holdings, a Canadian company advertising on their website that they're exploring for gold and base metal deposits in Virginia, USA. Their CEO, Thomas Ulrich, emphasized the expense his company was incurring for the twenty-three non-permitted sales, and that we should be appreciating the benefit his operation would bring to our county. Aston Bay Advisory Council member, Don Taylor, repeated that the county's permit was over the line and over the top, and that renewables need more and more minerals I ask, hoping to extract. Wirehouser's Kendall Fountain was confident that the law was on their side, but such a permit was enacted in Oregon, but he stated dismissively, "We know what Oregon is like." Our county attorney, Ann Wright, stated the permit needed to be broad enough to avoid the same conundrum, referring to definitions and wording that they've come up with so far regarding commercial prospecting, et cetera. The Farmville Herald reports the final version of the definition in the zoning text for registered commercial prospecting, taken from Danny Allen's motion as being, in quote, "The exploration of material included but not limited to minerals, stone, gas, or rock by commercial purposes by drilling, excavation, or other land disturbance activities for commercial purposes by the entity that has provided the following information: name, contact info, location, and method of prospecting, length and time, and activity." To me, this sounds so broad as to be an open door to anyone who wants to initiate large-scale destruction to our county's land and our citizens' welfare. We must have regulations that protect Buckingham residents, not outside industry. You can do better for your constituents. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. It's me again, Stephanie Rinaldi, over on Warminster Church Road in District five, calling to comment on tonight's Planning Commission meeting. You know, I've been talking to my neighbors, and we cannot figure out how you managed to turn a conversation about core drilling into regulations that include excavation. We went from talking about core sampling as a prospective activity to a definition of prospecting in general that now includes so many more activities than just core sampling. It's been a wild few months, but how we ended up here is a mystery. And I'm not sure where you guys came from to get here, but we got to sort that out. And now, to anyone from Kynite, or Boxley, or Luckstone who's listening, I want you to know that my neighbors and I are not trying to stop you from running your businesses. We've been telling the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors that gold and polymetallic mining is different than what you do. We've been telling them that those kinds of mines use different and dangerous processes. We've been pleading with them to acknowledge that, and for months, they've ignored us. Even the VATC told them aggregate mining is different than gold mining, and yet they refuse to talk about even the possibility of any future gold or polymetallic mines in the county. Instead, they've chosen to implement regulations that will both allow exploration for gold and other metals and make it harder for aggregate companies to do their work. Let's be clear. The Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have the authority to be specific in the regulations they set, but instead, they continue to speak in the broadest terms possible. So, back to the Planning Commission, and I hope you're still listening, because I have some news I think you'll want to hear. Mining is not the only business around. I know it sounds crazy, but it turns out there are literally hundreds of other businesses out there, thousands, maybe. I myself hope to have my own business soon, but you know what would stop that from happening? What would stop basically any other businesses from coming to Buckingham? A gold or polymetallic mine opening here. You've told us that there is very little chance that this type of mine will open here. You've brought in industry experts to tell us that. So why not just create regulations prohibiting gold and polymetallic mines in the county? If you do that, we can all sleep at night. You, because you won't have upset any of the mining businesses in the county, and us, the actual people in the county, because we'll know that we're protected from the very real dangers of a gold mine. Thank you for your time.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. New business?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have the introduction of case twenty ZMA two eighty-one for Des Raj. Our applicant is the, our landowner, rather, is J.D. Corporation of Virginia Incorporated at two two zero four South Constitution Route, Dilwyn, two three nine three six, and the applicant is Des Raj. The property information in question is Tax Map ninety-five, parcel thirty-two, contains approximately one acre, and it's located at thirty-four zero seven South Constitution Route, Dilwyn, at the intersection of State Route six forty-nine, which is Slate River Mill Road, and State Route twenty. This property is probably more commonly known as the Route twenty market currently. It is currently zoned A-one, and Mr. Raj is asking the Planning Commission to recommend a public hearing date in January to hear the request for rezoning from agricultural A-one to business B-one for the purpose of business expansion. This property currently operates as Route twenty market, which is a grandfathered use. Mr. Raj wants to expand his business and construct a four thousand square foot facility that will house a convenience store and a food specialty grill and shop. When an existing grandfathered use will be expanding or enlarging, per the Buckingham County zoning ordinance, the usage must be brought into compliance. Mr. Raj would not be able to apply for a special use permit in A-one because his new facility will be larger than the specifications on page eleven of the zoning ordinance, which states, "Convenience general store has a maxima of two thousand square feet and no more than four petroleum pumps." This location is approximately nine miles south of the centenary Scottsville Growth Corridor as outlined in the Buckingham County Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Raj does understand that further B-dot review may be needed, along with a site plan for construction, and all subject to final approval of his request.
Is he here?
He is not with us this evening.
And the Commissioners have any thoughts on this?
I would like to know how big a building he's talking about building, so we could get an idea of how much space he's got left.
Well, it also says that he could have no more than four petroleum pumps. How many is he planning on putting in now?
No, that's only if he applied for an SUP. He couldn't have more than four.
Right, so how many is he going to plan on putting in?
I don't have the number of petroleum pumps, but I'm sure it will be increased from the two that he currently has. I know he has a kerosene or diesel on the side. Let's take a look at his narrative to see if he addresses the pump situation.
And the description says it's approximately an acre.
That's correct.
Is that an acre plus or an acre minus, or what?
I don't have a plat, but on our GIS, it's described as one acre, approximately one acre.
It seems to me that...
I do believe that his pumps will increase to at least four. I think he would like to have pay at the pumps, or pumps that are available to pay on-site and not have to come into the store.
If I'm not mistaken, I don't have a narrative. Do y'all have it?
He only addresses his narrative and the questions. It's very, very broad. If you look at page... Under his written narrative, he lets you know that the land use is for business to rebuild the building for the convenience store. It'll have a gas station, convenience store, deli. He will have sewage for the business, and there will be, you know, trash dumpster for the business. That's what his narrative is. I think he felt like it was pretty self-explanatory that he'd be building a new convenience store, operating continuously as Route twenty market.
Well, I personally think we need to address things like parking. I mean, if you're going to have this great big store, you got to have parking spaces. Do we have room?
Would you like to go ahead and set a date for the public hearing and have that discussion with him at that time?
Yes, if he intends to come.
He will be here.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to vote forward in it?
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to have a public hearing next month.
Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll vote on it. All in favor?
And that will be January the twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth.
Twenty twenty-one.
Dabney, did you hear that?
Yes.
How would you vote?
Voting yes.
Okay. Alice, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. It moves forward to January, what'd you say, the twenty-fifth?
Yes, sir, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM.
Seven PM. Thank you. That concludes that particular case. The next one was the Planning Commission calendar.
Yes, sir. So what I've put before you today would be the Planning Commission work session dates, which are tentative if necessary. It's the third Monday of the month, unless it's a holiday. Your dates are listed for January through December of next year. And then our Planning Commission regular meeting dates, which are the fourth Monday of the month, unless it's a holiday, and those are listed as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So if you'd like to adopt that calendar for twenty twenty-one.
We have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
A second.
First and seconded, will's vote. All in favor? Dabney?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Reports?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any zoning administrator new information or reports for you.
Okay. Mission matters and concerns. Does any Commissioners have anything? Okay, we'll be looking for a motion to recess.
Don't move.
Second.
First and seconded. All in favor? Dabney?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Thank you. Planning Commission is recessed until January eleventh at six o'clock, where we will reconvene with the Board of